We're now moving forward with approval of the minutes. The question is on the approval of the March 27 business meeting as well as approval of the April 17 work session.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second here to roll. Call, vote please.
Board member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board member Orville.
Aye.
Board member Woods.
Aye.
Board member Love.
Aye.
Board member McCormick.
Aye.
Board member Jones.
Aye.
Board member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board member Cornell.
Aye.
Board chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That's a quorum. The minutes have passed. We will now move into the committee reports. I just want to, I'm going to yield the floor and we're going to move forward with all the other reports in light of time. And I know that board members have, a few of our board members have other commitments. So I'm going to move forward with the academic performance committee report.
What is it?
Academic performance.
Thank you Chair. I'm sorry, I guess I didn't hear you say that. I appreciate that. Academic performance committee, we met at the beginning of April and it was the first presentation of the academic plan. Just want to make everyone aware that this is a constant conversation, so we will have it up for review. Someone suggested monthly, others suggested quarterly. So the jury is still out on exactly how often that conversation will be. And then thank you Chair for allowing me to go ahead with 8.7 internal board operations. We discussed bi-annual review of policies, which is something, of course, that we do bi-annually. We now will be starting that process in June for almost 80 policies. We as well discussed board member policies that will come up for review and that will start over the summer as well. Business systems review will happen immediately. And thank you to Chief Johnson, who's actually not here, but finance will be our first one that will go first as a department doing a systems review for the district. Thank you.
Capital needs and facilities committee report.
We have not met since the last board meeting, but I believe April 30th, we're going to, the county commission is asking us to approve our capital budget. So we're going to have a committee meeting on the 30th, but it hasn't been noticed yet. But Ms. Phelan asked me about that today, so wanted to let everybody know that.
Okay, community engagement.
Thank you Chair. We had a meeting on April the 10th and pretty much we just discussed some of the new and exciting things that are going to take place in our community engagement department, dealing with our parent ambassadors and other ways that we can get our parents and communities engaged.
Thank you. Legislative advocacy, I'm sorry, evaluation committee report.
Thank you Chair. As we all know, we all received our evaluation packet and they were due to be put in the mail Friday. And as of yesterday, only three of nine have been received. So somebody, and I turned mine in, so that means two of eight. I'm not good with eureka math, but we got some detention coming up. So the effect is, I had my one-on-one interview scheduled for tomorrow morning and I have to reschedule my interview because the, oh, that's okay, yeah, that's okay. So anyway, I do encourage my colleagues to please drop those in the mail so we can proceed with this process. Thank you.
Legislative advocacy committee.
Thank you Madam Chair. Before I begin, I want to allow Superintendent to possibly give a few comments regarding Ten Ready. I know I could brief on the recent law that was just passed, but I guess it's still awaiting the governor's signature. I don't know if that happened last week or not, but I just wanted to see if you wanted to give a quick update on Ten Ready, on the possible impact. I know both the House and the Senate indicated a hold harmless bill that they had passed last week. And I think it had a lot to do with the advocacy of our teachers in this body to make sure that our teachers were held harmless during this first year. But I wanted to allow you Superintendent to give a few comments and then I'll wrap up the legislative portion.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. You're absolutely right. I think earlier the legislature essentially passed a bill saying that given the concerns with the Ten Ready test, it's up to local boards to determine whether or not those scores can be used to impact student grades. Obviously, there's a prohibition around using those test results when you're making him or capital decisions around teachers. So we'll be bringing some recommendations back to the board for the May meeting. But I do want to say, Mr. Woods, and I just want to encourage all of our students to continue to do their best. People put a lot of effort in this test and I'll talk more about it in my report. And it essentially, whether they use these scores or not, it's still the scoreboard. And I know that the natural inclination for people to say it's been messed up, I don't care. I've had kids to say that. I don't care Superintendent, it's not, it's going to be messed up anyway. But if people don't put forth the best effort and even if it's not used and our scores don't reflect the effort that's happening in schools, people still hold it over our heads.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that, those comments, students. I mean Superintendent, I think our students and our teachers, you know, come to school and come to work each day anticipating them giving their very best. And I think that it's our intent to continue to echo that message. So we appreciate that. My colleague, Board member Love, I wanted to just let everyone know that we're planning a June meeting, date to be announced. And our goal there is to just do a recap of this past session, what are the things we got accomplished, what are the things that are still on the table that we ought to revisit. Go ahead and be thinking about your legislative suggestion as we get prepared to have our agenda approved, hopefully by December as we get ready for the next year. And along the line Superintendent of CTEs, I do know that, you know, the state continues to do very well from a financial standpoint. I think Mr. Cornell often talk about that. And I think having one-time investments, particularly around technology, as we look to invest in our CTE programs and as we determine what investments need to be made at each school, is making sure the state is aware of what those investments need to be so we can continue to support our teachers and our students. And that concludes my report.
I'm going to move back up to audit budget and finance committee report. I apologize, Mr. Caldwell, if you could give that report.
No report. No, just kidding. We didn't have a meeting, but we do have a meeting made for us to finish up with the board in terms of what the budget's going to look like and the ask we'll make of the county commission. I do want to make the public aware that there will be two board member budget meetings. The first one being May 8th at 6:00 PM at Snowden School. And it will be for districts one, let me see, one, I think it's one, two, and three. That's board member Jones, board member Love, and me. And it'll be at 6:00 PM. There'll be dinner from 6:00 to 6:30. There'll be childcare and we encourage people to come out to that, even if you're not part of that district. Then May 10th, districts six, seven, and nine are having a meeting at 6:00 PM at Oak Haven High School. That's the 10th. And it's going to be hosted, and it's for districts six, seven, and nine, which are board members Shante Avant, Ms. Kately Bibbs, and Mike Cornell. So I would encourage the community to come out. Thank you.
Procurement committee.
Thank you Madam Chair. We did have a meeting on April 12th. We had three items on the agenda, the short-term, long-term disability, and the, can't remember the other, there was another also benefit package that was discussed and the EAP, right, the EAP. And so I think that the, it'll be ready for May. I think you're hoping for it to be ready for, is it ready for this, okay, it's ready for this one, I'm sorry. And so we did have a robust conversation about that and it's on the agenda tonight. The second item we had was a cybersecurity update from our IT director and that goes to the heart of some of the, one of the comments tonight. What we discovered and what we were informed is that security is a real issue in our district. And I think some of the changes, and I'm just saying from the conversation we had in committee, are because of actions that needed to be taken to have more stringent access. I know I work in an environment where you can't just get on the internet and pull up anything. There are limits on what you can access. But to that, if there are educational sites that, and teacher needs, then I think there should be a process and a conversation to approve access to those sites and only those sites and only at certain hours and times. It has to be done for security, the use of homegrown software and attaching and websites and flash drives, that's all limited in most business environments. And so while I understand that they, these teachers need these websites, we need a process for them to bring those forward. This is a website I've used. And Mr. Superintendent, I think that we should be able to accommodate those particular websites, but everything else, pretty much, I don't know, I'm not the IT person, but I know there have been some changes. And I just wanted, from the committee aspect, to know why those changes are taking place. We are, security is a real issue and things and decisions that are going to make people uncomfortable have to be made to ensure that all of our data, everything that we do, things that are relevant to employees, work environment, and everything is safe from a threat. And so that was the goal and it was discussed. I think there's going to be some ask and some recommendations later on about some purchases, but I think these were some immediate, intermediate things that were done. The last thing was an update on the diversity program. And I'm pleased that Ms. Allen and her team are working with the various other government agencies to ensure that we, as best as possible, based on our study, do get it right when we build this program. And so we're moving forward with that. One note, we had a previously scheduled procurement meeting, I think on June 12th, so we had to reschedule that because of a personal conflict of mine. I think the new date is the 19th. And so that's Madam President, it's our report.
Thank you Ms. Jones. We'll now move to the superintendent's report.
Just very briefly for Mr. Orville. Just want to make the board aware that Saturday, May 12th, from 10:00 AM to 3:30, we're going to have our Arts Fest. And over the next four weeks, our Arts Matter Awareness and Fundraising Campaign will highlight the stories of our students whose lives have been affected by the arts along with the stats to show the immense academic and socio-emotional benefits of fine arts and education. So please circle or put that date down in your calendar. Also on Saturday, we will be having a huge hiring fair for teachers. I think last year when we had this, we hired about 200 or 300 teachers. That'll be moving forward on Saturday at 10:00 AM. Chief Swanson's at 10:00 AM. And it's at the, yeah, so if board members can come by and say hello. I think last year there were 300 or 400 teachers, candidates there, so please stop by and say hello at 10 o'clock if you can. And then finally, board members, as you know, the outstanding turnaround work of Chief of Schools, Dr. Sharon Griffin and her team have done here has garnered state and national attention. So it's no surprise that she's sought after. By now, it's public knowledge that she will now be joining the Tennessee Department of Education and heading up the turnaround efforts statewide. And this is bittersweet for us. We never want to lose someone as passionate and experienced as Dr. Griffin, who has a heart for students, but we know her work going forward will affect all students statewide, including our own here at SCS. After a longstanding career in SCS, I consider Dr. Sharon Griffin family. And she has shared with me her personal and professional goals to continue supporting students. We support her and wish her continued success and thank her for the undeniable imprint she's left on Shelby County schools. Dr. Griffin and her team have worked to develop a plan that will help us ensure our great work continues even in her absence. And in the interim, I've asked Dr. Whitelaw to assume the chief of schools role. But I want to just be crystal clear. I think about where we were five years ago when the lawyer superintendent with no academic experience was here and that was a question. We got an extraordinarily strong academic team. And the work, one of the things I like about Sharon is that she has been a distributive leader and the people in these roles are doing a great job. And we, the news travels so fast, I think I've gotten about three or four calls nationwide from people who are very interested in coming to Memphis. So I just want to say, board, that we're going to all leave one day. And so I think it's our job as leaders to make sure that we have succession plans and have people here who are qualified and who can do the work and have the same passion and zeal that Sharon has. So she's only not here keeping her prayers because she's not here because her sister passed yesterday. So she's had a whirlwind situation. So she remains in our thoughts and prayers. We wish her well and it's going to be good to have somebody who knows Memphis, somebody who understands that the ASD needs to have a board so people can come and talk to. She knows that, somebody who knows that you can engage these communities to try to figure out true what communities need and it's not just a one-size-fits-all approach. So I'm very excited for her. Thank you.
Seeing no lights. I do, Superintendent, if you could just give, and I think we, in our legislative report, but I think board members, yeah, about the Ten Ready and were there any other questions about that? I think we've addressed that, but Mr. Cornell had a comment.
Yeah, I want to make, I would like to have some, at some point clarified that whether or not the state is going to insist that we use the Ten Ready scores.
So as I'm jogging through, Ms. Cornell, I did want to mention that to my report. I was trying to make sure Ms. Orville didn't get too frustrated with it. But I also want to say too, that we were going to play a video, but we're not going to play it because we're trying to move through. But there's a teacher here who was one of our great arts teachers who's in the video. Can she, he or she please stand? In fact, all our arts teachers here extensive. Yeah, just one. Thank you for what you do for our students. And I think to your point, Mr. Cornell, and I'm glad you reminded me, because actually our Chair asked that I have our team, in reference to the discussion, to do a financial analysis of what we spent to get ready for the Ten Ready test. And what they did was they dictated the national norm, between 10% and 15% of the time the teachers spend in the classroom is preparing for the test. So when you add up at the 10% level, when you add up the state technology funds, the Title I funds, you know, the big computer purchases that this board authorized, and then the teacher average cost preparing and administering the test, it comes up to $46 million. So in addition to the administration of the test, just what we spent this year just in preparation for the test. So we obviously are very frustrated, very disappointed that the test was not successful, but we are encouraging people to continue to do their best because what the state has said is that boards, local boards have the right to not use the test results for student grades. We can't use the test results for personnel decisions. And so we'll bring your recommendation around, that affects us in two ways because you know we have a performance-based compensation system, so we'll be bringing a recommendation around that. And we'll also be bringing a recommendation around the use of the test for student results at our May meeting. But again, it's those hidden costs, those latent costs, that $46 million, you know, that we spent this year in preparation for that, I think that's just something that the Chair wanted to bring to your attention.
So at this point, are we required to spend another $46 million next year for Ten Ready or do we not, do we know?
We don't know at this point.
Okay. And I like the idea that when you said we're going to reassess what to do, as you know, I put a resolution in asking or saying that we would no longer look at school scores. And I think that that has gone to committee and there will be a committee meeting at some point in the future. But if, if in the calculation, one section is taken out of the total, of the total valuation of a teacher, then all sections left are going to have an increased weight. The fact is, school scores are irrational, they're counterproductive. And whether we have that meeting on time, I mean, soon or not, I think we ought to look at taking school scores out and putting in a reward for teachers that are teaching in the hardest schools in. Because right now, you could be a good teacher in a difficult school and get a low score. So it's a lot of money being spent for, some of this irrational activity in scoring and there's a lot of money being spent for Ten Ready when really, I think it would have been better if we'd just given it to the teachers. So please look at, please look at the school scores. I think they're irrational, I think they're counterproductive. And I would rather, I recommend that when the budget comes and we're looking at paying teachers based on performance, that we ought to throw out the school score and put in a bonus for combat pay.
Thank you. Superintendent, I was going to ask about the cost for the Ten Ready. So it was $46 million for Shelby County schools, but Questar was paid a little over $30 million to administer the test?
I think that's what the contract with Questar is.
Okay. So I think that we need to spend this time or this year creating, creating a test or some type of measurement so that we can know where our children truly are. This is the third year that this test has been ineffective. And like Board member Cornell stated, this test is used for teacher pay, school closure, proficiency rates. So I think that we need to stop depending on the state of Tennessee to continue to fill us. And we need to create a test that tells where our children are, where they're going, and so we can know how effective our children's schools and our teachers are.
I agree with Ms. Love, but I think that the good part about having seen the test one year, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jones, I think that we now, in this budget, we're doing the formative assessments and assessing kids along the way so we can have a better real-time view. So we'll share it with you.
Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you. There are a couple of questions I'd like answered before next year and I would like them to give a full accounting of what went wrong and then well before the next school year, what they intend to do to make sure it doesn't happen again. I would also ask that you get with our legal counsel to see, I know that it was mentioned that in terms of closing a school, it's the authority of the LEA. I want to know what we're required in state law to do in terms of using these tests and if we're not compelled to use them. I would strongly recommend we find another test and then in the interim rely on tests that have been around for a while that are good indicators, like the ACT. And always get it messed up, it's the test for the Armed Services ASBO or something, yeah. So tests that are, for as far as we know, are reliable and have been reliable. And those are the things that for seniors and juniors and kids that are looking to go to college or into a career or in the military, that's what we really need to worry about, not the Ten Ready test. And if it comes to vote, I'll just say today that I, my vote is that it counts 0% for anything.
You know, one of the things that concerns me, too, Mr. Caldwell, you know, I know that Brad's been checking on this, but like, you know, now we don't know what the priority in this looks like. There actually will be some schools that will only have one year of data if the state doesn't count by the state standard. So I don't know how you judge a school's effectiveness based on one year when you've had standards changed, tests changed. So that's obviously a big red flag for us. And then just, you know, we had a lot of assurances at the beginning of the year that all the bugs were worked out. We did some dry runs and some demos and all these different kinds of things. And so, you know, quite frankly, I don't know what, you know, assurances we're going to ever get. And the last thing I know this board wants to have is for us to gear all up and spend all that time for next year and if we get to game day, have the same thing happen.
And the only thing I would add is that when you're calculating up the cost, I would really like to see some money paid back by the vendor that has done this for the last few years. And we continue to pay people again to do this stuff.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you Madam Chair. If I'm, and the general counsel may know the answer to this, I think the recently passed law concerning this Ten Ready also with the provision that the data could be used if it was helpful. I think there was something in there that said that you don't, you don't have to use it, but if it was helpful, we could. So Mr. Caldwell, there may be employees who, it would help. And so I think that's another question that we as a board, I think we are allowed to use it if it was helpful to that employee's score. And so whether we want to just disregard it altogether or give those a benefit, I think that's a discussion we would have.
Yeah. So I would agree, if it's helpful, that's one situation, but then you open another can of worms about different evaluations for different teachers. And so if that, if that's within the parameters of our ability to do so, I certainly don't want to do anything that's going to damage a student, a teacher, or a principal, or the future of a school. So I just think we need, as you said, look at it really carefully.
Superintendent, I just want to echo some of the thoughts from board members that, you know, I asked for that evaluation, the fiscal evaluation of where we are after Ten Ready, because I think it's important for the listening public to know what we have incurred as cost in order to get ready for a platform that did not work for our students. And so parents, and I know that Ms. Love has, you know, been advocating and telling folks that the State Board of Education needs to understand the impact to local districts when we have these kind of snafus. And snafu is being very conservative in a way to describe what has happened for our students, our teachers, and school leaders. Catastrophe would be a better word. I was trying to be nice, but it is, it really has been very hard. I mean, I've had numerous conversations with school leaders talking about teachers and their students not even knowing if they should move forward. And we want students to do their best, but this sends the wrong message for them. And so I really ask that as we as a board make considerations about how these test scores will not be used, and I am not in favor of using this test as an evaluation method for teachers in this year, I don't think that, I don't think that that can be trusted. So just reiterating what others have said, it has not been easy for us this year. And we don't have any faith that moving forward, it would be any better. Yep.
Madam Chair, I guess I've been advised that there are some, actually some students here from the video, and the video's very short, so can we just play the video so we can recognize the students in there?
Theater and the arts, as cliche as it sounds, it's really, it's my everything.
It's just made me more of a person, to be honest.
I'm a lot more outgoing, a lot more confident. I just take a lot more risks that I normally would never have taken without theater.
It's allowed me to express myself more because I used to be quiet and kept alone to myself, only talked to a certain number of friends. And now I'm able to go out and speak to other people.
Ms. Watson has been really important, not just in my theater life, but in my main life as well. She's really been the one to push me and she keeps me determined. She's really been my rock in a sense. She just inspires me to really want to be the best person that I can onstage and off the stage.
She makes you feel like you're somebody. She personally came to me and asked me, why wasn't I in the plays and musicals? And that honestly made me feel special because no teacher had ever pulled me aside like that.
I really think that I wouldn't be here as I am now without theater.
Theater, it brought me out of my shell and I wouldn't be the person I am today.
The arts matter because it gives students like me a chance to express themselves. It gives them a chance to realize their full potential and to understand that you really can do anything that you put your mind to.
That concludes my report.
General Counsel report.
No report, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to new board, is there, not a new board, does it? So we're now in, on the items for the consent agenda. Are there, okay, are there any objection, any objections to moving 12.2 back to the consent agenda?
12.2, they documented.
Okay, if there are no objections, then I am going to ask for, I'm going to read the items and then we'll ask for an approval of the consent agenda. 11.2 textbook selection, 11.3 University of Memphis Campus School Amendment, 2.5 million, 11.4 University of Memphis Accelerated Masters of Science Degree Program for Math Teachers, 310,000. 11.5 New Teacher Project, 182,500. 11.6 Learn Zillion Platform and PD for ELA Curriculum, 236,075. 11.7 Power School Registration, 2018, '19 School Year, 237,806. 11.7 Power School Registration, 2018-19 School Year, $237,806. 11.8 Contracts, Curriculum, and Associates Already, $2,559,815. 11.9 Teaching Lab, $175,615. 11.10 EA Employee Assistance Program, $355,212. 11.11 Computers, Software, and Services, $4 million. 11.12 Special Course Applications. 11.13 Summer School Food Service, Food Service Produce, Fresh Fruits and Vegetables, $187,220. 11.4, 300, 11.4 The Summer Feeding Commercial Food Items of $535,876.65. 11.5 Manor Lake Jeter Conversion and Consolidation. 11.16 USDA Commodity Process Items and Commercial Equivalents for the 2018-19 School Year, you know, amount of $15,588,901.1. 11.17 Contract Modification, IDB Wells Elementary HVAC Replacement. And just that there is, the correct approved amount will be $2,570, $2,574,000 is the amount. 11.18 Water-Based Sprinkler System, $174,930. 11.19 April Budget Amendment. 11.20 Resolution Amending the Shelby County of Education's Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Improvement Plan Budget. 11.21 amended resolution improving SES Board Strategic Allocation, and I want to give the correct amount. Okay, I'm sorry, amendment to something adopted, so I don't have to give the amount. I'll get back to that under the Board action on. 11.2 donation to White Station High School Community Courtyard, $154,179. 11.23 APE Agency, $100,000. And then we are moving the documentary also to the consent agenda. All right, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second. Ms. Anthony Poole, Ms. Anthony Poole, roll call vote, please. Roll call.
Board Member Caldwell?
Aye.
Board Member Orgle? Board Member Woods? Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have seven ayes.
You have a quorum, the consent agenda is approved. We're now moving to request for action. Okay, the resolution approving SES School Board Strategic School allocations in the amount of $248,100. Kind of read those amounts. Under Board Chair Avant, Levi Elementary School, Materials for Parents Center, $5,000. Mitchell High School, Student Recognition and Support, $6,000. Under Board Member Jones, Douglas High School Athletic Uniforms, $7,100. Under Board Member Cornell, Melrose High School, Display Case and Monitor, $25,000. Fox Meadows Elementary, $20,000. Ridgeway High School, $15,000. Under Board Member McCormick, White Station High School, $10,000. Bolton High School, Agricultural Program, $15,000. Barrett Chapel Student Recruitment, $5,000. Under Board Member, under Vice Chair Love, Tresman High School, Feeder Zone Recruitment, $5,000. Grandview Heights, Feeder Recruitment, $5,000. Sandy Kills, $5,000. Raleigh Egypt, $5,000. Egypt Elementary, $5,000. Keystone Elementary, $5,000. Northwest Press, $5,000. And Oak Haven Middle School, Marquis, $7,000. Board Member Woods, Germanshire, Marketing Outreach, $5,000. Germantown Elementary, $10,000. Germantown High School, Athletic, Athletic Commitment and Laptop Card, $20,000. Germantown Middle School, $5,000. Hickory Ridge Middle, $5,000. Highland Oaks, $10,000. Cover High School, $5,000. Lawrence K. 8, $5,000. Oak Forest Elementary, $5,000. Ross Elementary, $5,000. Elementary, $5,000. Southwind High School, $5,000. Southwind Elementary, $5,000. Windridge Elementary, $5,000. Highland Oaks Middle School, $5,000. And then Oak Haven Middle, $3,000. And that is a total of $248,100. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion approved.
Motion by Board Member Caldwell, second by Board Member Love. Can I get a roll call vote? Board Member Caldwell? I'm sorry, Mr. Orgle? I am usually trying to move so quickly that you... We will indulge you to make sure that your schools are covered. I don't see any for you.
I'm gonna ask Aisha. Let me walk, can I ask a question?
Sure. Okay. So seeing no other lights, if we could get a roll call vote for item 12.1?
Board Member Caldwell?
Aye.
Board Member Orgle?
Aye.
Board Member Woods? Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have six ayes.
That motion passes. Okay, so this item for the documentary was up for discussion and if there's no one that wants to discuss, we're gonna move on to 12.3, which is the proposed budget discussion. Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, I wanted to get some clarification about what, what that was about. I think I've heard a little bit about it and how do we go about seeing if we can't get that to vote on? Can we vote on it this meeting?
So the author is not currently with us, so...
All right, can we, can we move the other one ahead and give them a chance and maybe she'll be back?
Sure. Let's move to 12.3, the proposed budget discussion.
Yeah, just for that, just a, really just a quick update for the Board. I think Mr. Caldwell actually nailed it in his budget finance committee report, just that we were having a meeting, I think, coming up on the first. There are a series of Board Member-led community presentations coming up. I think our final date with the County Commission is May the 30th. They're also gonna want to hear about our capital asks. And so that's why I think Ms. Orgle mentioned, we're gonna do the Facilities Committee so we can get clear with the Board in terms of what we want to ask for in the budget. And that's just what we're gonna use it as an update.
All right. Can I get a motion in then, a second, and then we can discuss this item? Oh, I'm sorry.
But I had a question for the Superintendent.
Mr. Caldwell?
I think we had a discussion and we were talking about CIP being earlier than the, than the ask, I mean, for the, for the overall budget, around the 17th or something?
Yes, I think that we just got some information, if you have it, I think, a couple of days ago, I think, is it the 17th or the?
Yeah, the county is voting on their CIP program on the 16th. And so that's why we are trying to have the ad hoc facility meeting on April 30th so we could review it with the Board and you'd have a little bit of time.
But does that mean for the 17th to present or the 16th?
Well, my understanding is that we're gonna do the ad hoc meeting on the 30th and then we're gonna have a special call meeting to vote on the budget and on the SIP request and that, I don't know if that's scheduled or not. I just scheduled the ad hoc meeting.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna have to do at a minimum, Mr. Caldwell, is do the, the CIP, do a special call meeting so we can present to the County Commission, because I've, you know, we've been told to, you don't want them to go and vote and we haven't presented. So I think that we're trying to, in the process, work now getting a date scheduled for our presentation for the CIP. Hopefully we can just do it all, but you know...
Right, I just wanted to make sure we hit that lineup right. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, we are on, we're now to 12.2, the documentary. Mr. Caldwell had asked if there could be some context given for the item. Ms. Love?
So basically, this is a documentary that will highlight Shelby County schools. It will discuss the merger, the demerger, and pretty much tell our story. This will be, well, in this documentary, past Board members, present Board members, community members, and anybody who played a part in the merger and demerger relating back to the, the new Shelby County schools.
Mr. Caldwell?
All right, that's great. And so do we, do we need to take action to get that in motion? Because if we do, I'd make, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve doing the Shelby County Schools documentary.
So, you want me to ask that? So if we, if we're moving forward with an action, then Mr. Caldwell has brought it forth with the motion to move forward with producing a documentary. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. And so I, I think just working with communications for us to think about exactly what the scope of the project will be and how we will have those that will be involved as part of the process. Mr. Caldwell, you have a question?
I imagine there's gonna be a fiscal note to that, so I would certainly want that to come back to us to be approved, that part of it. Well, it just, it got on there, I don't see it on mine, but that's great. All right. There's not one attached to mine.
We'll make sure that it's sent out to Board members.
Okay.
Okay, can I get?
Close and open again, but I didn't see it here.
Can I get a roll call vote? The motion is to move forward with the producing of the documentary, and that is what the motion is on the floor. So there's a question on the motion? The motion on the floor is to move forward with producing a documentary that tells the story of SES, that also highlights issues that came up with the merger and demerger and then the new SE, SES. That's what the... Ms. Jones?
So when you say move forward, is this a, this is a district-driven initiative or request that we would be documenting and producing?
So this was, I think, first initiated by thoughts from Ms. Love with community engagement, so it would have to be a district, yes, district run. And it was at the bequest of one Board member.
Do we have a cost?
There's $60,000 associated.
Okay.
Do you have any? Okay, seeing no other lights. Roll call vote, Ms. Anthony?
Board Member Caldwell?
Aye.
Board Member Orgle? Board Member Woods? Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have seven ayes.
Yeah, that motion passed. Okay, seeing no, Superintendent, if there are no other items before this Board, this meeting is adjourned.